Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection, for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Vince Marconis, Angela Glazier, and William Lavelle. Thank you. Call please.
Mr. King?
President.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. Dispense with leniency of minutes.
Third Order 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report for Year-to-Date May 2nd, 2025, and Year-to-Date Comparison Report for May 3rd, 2024 through May 2nd, 2025.
Are there any questions, comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have two announcements. So, this Saturday, the Northeast PA Armed Forces Day Parade will take place in downtown Scranton. It kicks off at 11:00 a.m. at Gino Merly Veterans Center, and it's going to end at the Courthouse Square. So, it kicks off at 11:00 o'clock. And then next week, there's going to be regular trash and refuse pickup for Election Day as DPW will be working.
Thank you. What else?
Thank you.
Hi, everyone, as well. On Saturday, June 7th, beginning at 10:00 a.m., Neighbor Works is going to have their West Scranton Garbage Olympics, which they've been doing for several years now, and I've been able to be a part of in the, in the past. And I think it's just a really great event, a great opportunity to be involved in a, in a cleanup. And there's, if you like, that competition factor, there's that too, because there are prizes depending on if you have the largest team or the amount of garbage that, that you're able to pick up within the, the timeframe. And then they usually have a little bit of a party back at, at headquarters afterwards to, to celebrate. So, if you'd like to join in on that, you can go through Neighbor Works. It's also part of the Scranton City Pride Project, so you can go to ScrantonCityPride.org to find out more as well. And there'll be a meeting at Neighbor Works' office, which is at 815 Smith Street in Scranton. And that's, once again, Saturday, June 7th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a quick one. So, being National Police Week, I want to thank the brave men and women of the Scranton Police Department, the protective service every day. And I'd also like to extend the same thank you to all the brave men and women of the other police departments in, in local municipalities. Secondly, the Victor L. Fury Club in West Scranton will be having their spaghetti dinner. It's going to be Wednesday, May 14th, and Thursday, May 15th. So, this isn't their lunch, this is, this is their dinner. It's for takeout or eat-in. Both days will be from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. will be takeout. From 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., you can also eat-in and take-out. It's $12 for adults and $15 for children. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The Residential Electronic Recycling Event is this Saturday, May 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Scranton High School, 63 Munchack Way. You can go on the Scranton website and visit ScrantonPA.gov/Recycling, and you can register on that to get a $30 discount off of your entire drop-off that you're doing. Registration is required, as space is limited, and it is only open to Scranton residents. We will put this on our website then, so we can advertise it.
I will, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Fourth Order, Citizen Participation.
First, Joan Hoda-Wanis.
Joan Hoda-Wanis, Scranton. Correct me if I'm wrong, but next Tuesday, isn't that election, primary election day?
What is that?
Are you going to reschedule the council meeting?
Yes, we are rescheduled till, to, to, to Thursday.
Thursday at same time?
Same time.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And I hope everybody that's registered does go out to vote. Also, on Saturday, from 10:00 to 3:30 in the afternoon, the public library's having a sidewalk book sale right in front of the Albright Memorial Library. So, come early, go get your books, and then head on down to the parade. It ought to be a good time. And as you notice, I'm starting to wear my "Swinging on Vine" t-shirt. Friday, May 23rd, at 5:00 p.m. is "Swinging on Vine," which is the library's major fundraising event, right in front of the library on Vine Street. I believe the band is, again, picture-perfect, and it's 21 and over, because there will be alcohol, so if you're a downtown resident like I am, you can drink to your heart's delight and low crawl home. I'm sure all, all the, our friendly police department will take care of us. Speaking of taking care, are we still in negotiations for DPW's collective bargaining agreement?
I, I said today, and there is a day scheduled for them to begin again.
Okay. And May 31st is just around the corner. If we were adhering to the Home Rule Charter, that would be the drop-dead date for the 2024 audit, and I know we're not going to make that, that milestone. But are they working up in the BA's office feverishly on pulling together the data for the audit?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, that's great. I noticed on the agenda, looking at the backup, that several of the resolutions were tied into the 2026 Federal Appropriations Community Project Funding. And they were all worthy projects, Pine Brook, Pittston Avenue, so on and so forth, even an Emergency Operations Center. And that's fine, but I'm not all, I'm not all that confident that federal funding can be assured after what happened with BRIC. Have we had any information or update on that they might give us something after taking away the BRIC money?
Nothing at all.
Okay. And speaking of these 2026 projects, this Emergency Operations Center, you know, I get terribly confused, because I go back several years to the Serenti Center, and I remember them mentioning that that might become an Emergency Operations Center. So, we're going to go now with the, the one from the Career Technology Center's property, correct?
Correct.
And this, is this a backup, or is this aligned in any way with the county's Emergency Operations Center in Jessup?
Don't, no. What I've seen, Joan, is, is mostly like it's our fire department and training like that, and try to bring the students across to that, to integrate into, into that program.
I was just wondering, because, you know, Scranton is the largest municipality. Should something happen to the Emergency Operations Center in Jessup, maybe, maybe the two of you can work together in an MOU that one can support the other in some event? You never know.
It might be a possibility.
Yeah. And, you know, we hear very often about how the Scranton Times Tribune has deteriorated to a great degree since it was sold, and it's gotten thinner and shorter and far less local coverage. But every once in a while, the paper will surprise you, like on May 10th. There are three things. Under the news feed, US poet's laureate criticized Trump's firing of the Librarian of Congress, number one. So, they fired the Librarian of Congress. Then the Pentagon directed the military to pool all books, library books, that had anything to do with DEI, okay? But the kicker was Today in History, 1933, Book Burnings Were Held in 34 Cities Across Germany. This is all on May 10th. That was 1934, the others are now. That made me get chills up and down my spine. Now, I don't know about you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Angela, Ramon? Angela?
Lunch, class?
I just want to make sure that everyone in the audience can hear me. I was told last time I spoke, I was a little too far away from the microphone, so can I get a thumbs up from the back? All good? All right, so to begin, I would like to talk a little bit about what some of the people here earlier were discussing about our roads. And something I didn't hear come up when it comes to a lot of the damage that accumulates on our roads is that most of it is done by personal vehicles, by cars, by pickup trucks, by SUVs, because the city of Scranton, for decades now, has done all of their city planning around the idea that we must sprawl out in our development, and all new development should be centered around the use of personal vehicles, as opposed to any other modes of transportation, such as walking, biking, using public transit, such as buses or trolleys. And that adds a significant amount of wear and tear onto our roads and a significant tax burden to our residents to maintain them. So, a suggestion that I would like to make, that I did not hear today, is that for many of the roads within Scranton, I know some are owned by PennDOTs, so there's restrictions on what the city can do with those, but even for many city-owned roads, they are often far too wide for the purposes that, that they're being used for. Take South Washington Ave., for example, where, I, I don't recall if that's PennDOT-owned or, or city-owned, but anyone who's driven on that road is, is aware that it's very difficult to even know if you're in the correct lane because of the way that the, the road is, like, what, 80 feet wide, right? And you have people essentially driving one lane in each direction on this 80-foot-wide road, and then the city starts to pay to maintain all of that. It's an excessive burden on us, and we should really be focusing on allowing that road to be used for all sorts of other purposes besides just personal vehicles. In addition, in order to encourage the use of other modes of transportation, the city should consider allowing different modes of development outside of just single-family homes. I'm aware that with the new zoning, zoning ordinance that was passed the past couple of years, the city has allowed for more, slightly more dense development in certain pockets of the city, but it's not nearly enough to meet the demand for housing that the city has. We've been in a shortage for many, many years. It's caused an undue burden on everyone living in this city with the increasing cost of housing, and we do deserve to have different options available for housing to meet our various needs. So, that's the main thing I wanted to discuss today. And for another point unrelated, I do recall the last time I was here, I asked each and every one of you about your commitments to protecting the rights of all LGBT residents within Scranton. And since then, I, I'm sure many of you are aware, State Senator Marty Flynn had decided to vote yes on SB 9, which is a bill that would ban transgender athletes from competing in sports across Pennsylvania and would require genital inspections for any player that is accused of being transgender, specifically playing in women's sports. This bill is incredibly, incredibly invasive and disgusting and hurtful, not just to, you know, transgender athletes in Pennsylvania, which there aren't many, to be very clear. It hurts everyone that wants to participate in sports across our, our Commonwealth. So, with that in mind, I've heard that Tom Schuster has received campaign donations from Marty Flynn, and I would like clarification from you on whether or not those donations were received from Marty Flynn, and irrespective of that, if you are willing to openly condemn his decision to vote yes on SB 9 in light of you stating your commitment to protecting all lesbian, gay, bisexual, and trans residents of Scranton. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Bob Bowles?
Evening, Council. Bob Bowles, Scranton. You know, listen to some of the crazy stuff around here once in a while, but first off, I am running for mayor in Scranton as a Republican, write-in. I was taken off the ballot by a Rhino, Charlie Spano. However, I'm up for expungement, and it will be granted, and I will be able to take the seat November if elected. So, I want to set that very clear. I filed suits recently on the tax assessment and the tax increase. What have the other candidates done? I haven't seen anybody file a lawsuit that gives a damn about the people in the city or the community, other than here we are, a few weeks to an election, and all of a sudden, everybody's doing something. I've been coming here for how many years in defense of the city of Scranton? 31 years, I do a dinner. I don't pat myself on the back. I'm a Scrantonian, and that's an important thing to me. You know, I filed a federal lawsuit to have the officials that are going to El Salvador to bring the scum back here, that they pay out of their own pockets if they want to go, but you don't represent this country. And any money that we did spend, we want it back. If you want to come to this country, you come in here legally, and if you can't, too damn bad. I want to see an ICE office here in the city of Scranton. I want to let them know, if you're here illegal, you're getting the hell out of here. You want to come here, come through legally, come through honestly. If you don't, you're getting the hell out of here. I intend to make our police the force, a reckoned to be, nobody will want to come here. They'll have the resources, they'll have everything they need. I see stuff going on today. Why wasn't it done a long time ago? Where's the legislation been here? It's been all BS. You know, when you turn around and you sit here and look, I asked you guys to get rid of the Biden signs. Well, if I get elected mayor in the city of Scranton, those damn signs are going down ASAP, because it's a disgrace. It's a humiliation. The scum we have coming into this city, thank you, Joe Biden. What's in El Salvador belongs in El Salvador. Not our officials going there saying, "We want to bring you back into the United States." If they like it so much, let them stay the hell over there, if you don't like our country anymore. That flag, we have our vets this coming weekend. All those that didn't come home gave it all, so we could sit here today, so I could stand here, so other candidates could stand here. Our fellow vets gave it all, and if anybody's to be honored in this country, it's them. And as far as men and women's sports, adamantly opposed. If you don't like it, it's too damn bad. That's your gender, that's where you belong, and if you can't compete there, and you lose, and you can't win, that's too bad, but don't take on women that because you think you're a tough guy. It's not the way it is, and it's not the way it'll ever be. You know, what makes this here Scranton, while you guys are here, it makes it personal. People say, "Why are you running for mayor again? Why are you going through this?" He goes, "This is my city. This is where I'm born and raised. This is where our companies have been here for almost 100 years. I raised my family here, and I'm not going to sit back and get bullied by people like Spano or the rest of them that can't come out and do what I'm trying to do or what we're trying to do here." We're looking at four years, now they're paving the streets. Where, where have they been? Where's everybody been? If Scranton wants to change, you got to make it happen. You lead by example. You leave the BS outside. I lead by example. I'm not for sale, you don't intimidate me, and you'll never own me. Not when it comes to my city. And I've defended this city from day one, and I'll continue it to the day I die. My parents are buried in the city, my grandparents, those that came here, they came here legally. That's a big word, legally. I'm asking anybody out there that sees this today, I'm wearing my shirt, that says Scranton's Next Mayor, Bob Bowles, if you want to change in the city of Scranton, as a Republican, write-in, write-in Bob Bowles, and you'll have a city that you'll wish somebody else did in the past. But as I stand here, Scranton will be a new city if I'm elected mayor in the city. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Chris Matthews?
Hi, Chris Matthews from Up on the S.U. Development. I emailed all of you multiple times. Jerry, Tom, thank you for getting back to me about this property damage. I have a substantial amount of damage to my property, at least well over $100,000, all because of a five-foot section of curb that has been never put in by the city during the paving project, causing all the water to come off the road right onto my neighbor's sidewalk, which goes underground, and it comes onto my property. Now, my, at first, it was just property, it was just my yard, it was my wall shifting. My roof has now begun to fall off my front porch, and I have been, since February 20th, contacted the city about this. And March 3rd, February 20th, March 3rd, DPW arrived up to my house with a backhoe, just to tell me that they are not allowed to do any type of work on East Mountain whatsoever, that they are being instructed by someone, someone in the city, I cannot find out who. And so, a water table study is done, which also, I cannot find any information, and no one has come to my property to do a water table study. My, my, the water level in my ground in my house is amazing. I have nine, nine other properties around me also being destroyed by virtually underground stream, which comes through my property, filters around my pool, and goes into, I lost, my neighbors lost two trees, got uprooted. Their, their properties are sinking with cracks in their ceilings and their foundations. They pump out water constantly. And the stormwater study that HRG engineers did for the stormwater determined that there is water coming out of the ground over near the fire station, next to the culvert that runs from Robinson Park to runoff, which I found, and it's just groundwater coming, and there's just a question mark on it. No one knows where it's coming from, no one bothered to look at it. I believe that this water is what's coming through the whole neighborhood, at least at least, at least nine properties I know of. I've counted two dozen sinkholes, over a dozen in my yard alone. Yeah, I'm, my, my backyard is completely sinking. I'm losing my back roof, I'm losing my front roof. March 10th is when I emailed everybody, and I was told, Jerry said you were giving it over to business agent, I believe, and then city engineering was supposed to get in contact with me. By 9:00 o'clock that night, I got, that was 8:00 o'clock at night, 9:00 o'clock at night, I got an email from Scranton 311 stating that this determination is naturally occurring hydronic pressure from groundwater, and the city's not going to do anything about it. Hydronic pressure has nothing to do with groundwater. Hydronic pressure's in pipes. And the only person that ever told me that was Steve Teamman, who is a highway supervisor, no way, shape, or form, as his words exactly is, he is not an engineer. He cannot make that determination whatsoever. But yet somehow, in between the hour of 8:00 and 9:00, when the last thing you said to me, Jerry, was, "It's passed over to city engineering." I inquired about it April 3rd. I have not got any type of information, no engineer has showed up to my house. I need to know, the, the process to find out that determination within the hour of emails, like, I, that's, that's my big question, is how that determination was done within 8:14 emailing everyone in city council to 9:14 getting that determination. And now, there's like, every rainfall, every rainfall, my property just keeps sinking. There's telephone poles, the telephone poles are falling down, all the utilities running into all the houses are being eaten away by underground water erosion. It is clearly underground water erosion, because you have exposed roots, you have sinkholes, and it follows all the utilities, where there, where there are pipes, into, into all the houses up there. I have nine, nine houses I've found that have this extensive damage. What just happened in Honesdale last week with the storms, that is imminent up there, because everything is running, obviously downstream. And they said, in, in the stormwater report, nobody looked at the S.U. development whatsoever, went right around it, went Cherry Street, where they're getting, and down Florida Avenue was getting flooded, East Mountain Road, those houses were getting flooded. From what the report has a question mark on, they just don't know where this groundwater is coming from. So, I'm here to, I believe I know where this groundwater is coming from, I believe it's starting at my property, because I have so much damage to my property alone. And like I said, there's, there's at least nine different properties up there, all behind me.
Excuse me, Mr. Matthews, is it Matthews or Mathews?
Matthews.
Matthews, how long are you living there?
I've been up there for seven, seven years, I've owned it for five, rented for two.
So, all this damage is recent, and you believe it's because of improper paving or the curb? Is, is that?
Yeah, I mean, I have the pictures here.
No, I understand. I mean, I saw your email, but I thought there was, I, I, I did see your, I did see your email, and I thought it was being taken care of because of the response, so, but I'm curious to, as.
If you want to look into it, right?
If I can explain this, I, I did speak to the administration about this, because it was a big concern, not only of his, but other people up there. City engineer was up there twice. I have not seen the report, but I know they were there twice, and I know our DPW director was there, and every supervisor from DPW was up there.
On my property?
Not on your property. They went up to look at whatever the situation was that you reported. So, I have not seen the report from them, but I guess we will ask for it or, and see what it is. But the city engineer was there twice.
I phoned the city engineer today, and they did not give me any information on that.
Well, I don't know if the city engineer will tell you anything. You've got to go through the city. I will find out tomorrow and see if there is a reporter, if there is some kind of information that they have on this, but I know they were, they've been there.
All right, but I mean, like, you know, my, 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 my house has been destroyed. While, while this, while this process, while this process is taking so long, all these people were there, they should have noticed that this is underground water erosion.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, but we, we will ask again for you.
So, Mr. Boldenberg, did we have any updates?
We did reach out today and requested that the DPW director and supervisor call and meet with Mr. Matthews.
And then can we, can we get, can you leave all of your contact information with Allison here?
We have emails from him.
I'll ask them to include the city engineer tomorrow. I'll ask them to include the city engineer tomorrow.
Yeah, Frank, I had an email, Frank, yesterday.
You people, the residents, not y'all, just don't read the handwriting on the wall. Last month, I related, standing right here, that the overpaid primadonnas that we consider the zoning board had brought up a solar farm right inside River City here. It seems like there wasn't no interest in it, so it passed, then the doodoo hit the fan. These residents realize what they're going to be looking at the rest of their lives. They realize their home values just fell in half of what the reassessments have. These reassessments, no wonder there's thousands of people crying about it. My insurance told me, I stood here like a year ago and told you what my reassessment would be, and everybody said it couldn't happen. My insurance had it a year ago, and they sent me in my reassessment, they said, by the bored foot, my house could be completely built $25,000 cheaper than the reassessment. These people were from out of town, they had no interest whatsoever in the city. This was a big, huge waste of energy and money. Well, I guess it was two weeks ago, this same bunch, this mob of useless, worthless employees of the city voted on making four properties into 10. If you think I'm lying, go read the paper about the last reassessment meeting. Four properties into 10. Can you imagine 10 rooms of the undesirables like Bob was talking about filling up our city? Maybe 10 cars that are always illegal parked on the sidewalk so your children and pedestrians can't use them, just exactly what's happening in my neighborhood for years. Nobody in this government cared. Well, you know, in my wanderings every day, I talked to probably the last month, 15, 20 people, and nobody was overwhelmed by the candidates. And the general feeling is that Cognetti will reign over us again. You know, she favors nonprofits galore. You saw that when the guy singer's problem come up. She'd like to see a nonprofit college town, a nonprofit medical center on the backs of who? On the backs of some low-income people that's still lucky enough to have their houses, and some seniors that are holding on to their property. It's a shame. The plan would be raise taxes again, like always. Nobody has any kind of plan whatsoever except raise taxes. I'll tell you, before it's all over, this newspaper will have to be twice as thick to handle all the foreclosures and sheriff sales on Fridays. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Rick Sabeta?
Just to refresh, I'm the property owner of 423, 427 10th Avenue. My name is Richard Sabeta. April 29th, two weeks ago, Tuesday, was at city council concerning a property in the rear adjoining mine that was in the process of collapsing. This was a follow-up of four written official complaints to the city clerk right outside here, and two prior visits to city council. Now, two weeks ago, I was up here, I'm sure you remember, and I said, "This building is ready to fall down." And I hate to refer to it as a garage, because the dimensions were approximately 30 by 50 by 30. It's a big structure with an attached 30-foot wooden telephone pole. Needless to say, at council, I was told someone would get back to me within two days. That was April 29th. Then on May 7th, the building actually collapsed. Scranton police, fire, EMS, city engineers responded. They issued, I guess, an emergency declaration for a bid to remove the debris that had fallen. Luckily, by the grace of God, it fell the most perfect way, totally forward onto Azwell Court, so no one was damaged as far as life, or even minimal adjoining property damage. Okay, so that was done. Now, the information I received, and I don't know how accurate it is, is there were three bids, one was for $10,000, one was for 14, and one was for 17. Well, the bid was awarded to the person for $10,000. It was R E O, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that. No problem, they came and they removed it. The problem that exists now is the foundation of the garage was abating a retaining wall on my property. I guess they did the best they could, but when they removed it, the bulldozer or whatever actually took on part of this retaining wall. So now I'm left with my retaining wall, which is approximately 12 feet, and the property sloped with a height of varying from about three to six feet. Now, the dirt from my yard is literally 180-degree drop-off, and there's nothing holding it back. So now we have the problem of soil erosion. Naturally, it's going to fall, and there's two trees just sitting there with the roots partially exposed. Now, of course, kids are playing there again, and now we're going to have like, maybe 70 cinder blocks that are sitting there, with the impact force of this dirt, two trees ready to come over. Based on the action from two weeks ago, nothing was done to correct, but it was a hazardous situation, and now we have the retaining wall. So it's both a safety issue, and secondly, I'm going to have major soil erosion very shortly. I come asking, what type of follow-up do I get, or what should I do?
Well, I can explain this to you a bit, because I did have a meeting with our business administrator today about yours, because I did ask about that wall. And the emergency declaration was signed the day before it caved in, it fell down. So the contract was already hired. As far as the wall, I don't know, did you say it's the wall on your property, or is it the wall belonged to that structure that was removed?
On my property.
So is it your wall?
Yes.
So it is your wall, okay. So that was the first thing they had to find out, who owned the wall, okay? And then I said, "Well, what will we, what can the city do since, you know, we removed all of the other stuff?" And we really didn't come up with a plan, except that they will send this week the city engineer up and look at it, and see if the city can do anything, I guess, to support or brace the wall. I did not see it, so I don't know exactly what it looks like, but that's what I was told about three hours ago.
Okay. And the day of the collapse, correcting if I'm mispronouncing the names, but I believe her name was, her last name was Frabel, I apologize for not remembering the first, I believe she was from OCD, whatever, and there was a person, a gentleman by the name of Connors from Scranton Redevelopment, and city engineers, they had, they took many pictures, including, I guess, the publicist or PR person that does the video photographing, he was there, a young gentleman, he has it also, there's numerous, numerous pictures taken of the problem. And both Mr. Connors and Ms. Frabel addressed it, they said, "Yes, something has to be done with that wall, because that whole dirt is going to fall."
Okay, I didn't hear about it until like this morning, and I did have a meeting this afternoon, so they will contact you and come up and look at it.
And the second issue, like we mentioned last week, now you have the house that belonged to that garage, that's falling down, and now the city engineer himself said.
Last, two weeks ago, you asked me about the house, I did, as much as I could to get that moved. So now we will move on the wall, and then I will see what we can do about the other structure.
Okay, I appreciate anything you can do. Thanks.
Good evening, council. Lynn Labraski, homeowner, business owner, lifelong resident and taxpayer. So what I wanted to talk about tonight was that the primary election is a week away. As some of you are well aware, I am running for Scranton mayor as a Republican ballot candidate. I just want to remind anyone out there that is registered Democrat, who will receive a Democrat ballot, that they can write me in as a Republican candidate on their Democrat ballot, and anyone Republican can write in a Democrat. I just, a lot of people I talked to aren't aware of that, and I just wanted to put that out there. I had a woman the other day that said she already mailed in, she would have written me in had she known, so I just wanted to put that out there. And also mention that the last day to request a mail-in is today, so if you need to do that, you should go online and do that today. The other thing I wanted to talk about was that, being new to politics, I filed my first campaign finance report, and so did the other ballot candidates. So I found it very interesting, and by the way, this is public information, anyone that wants to look at campaign finance reports for any candidate can call Lackawanna County voter registration, and they can request that information. The people down there are very nice, and they would gladly email that to you. It was pretty astonishing to me to see what some of the candidates are spending on their campaigns. So when I first decided to run for mayor, I was told by my own party that if I ran opposed in a primary, I would need $350,000 to beat my opponent. I think that's insane. So I guess, from what I gathered, looking at the campaign finance reports, Paige Cognetti was on top for the most donations. And it might be interesting to some people out there listening, that a lot of her donations came from area lawmakers, progressive PACs, and over $22,000 of her donations came from out-of-state donors, donors that are not even in the state of Pennsylvania. And then another $14,000 was loaned to her campaign from herself. So I found that very interesting. Most of her expenses were spent on consulting. The other mayoral candidate, Trish Beinen, her campaign took in $88,000 and spent $86,000 on mostly advertising, and her funding came from, she self-funded as loans to the campaign, and also, her money was spent on mostly advertising. Bob Sheridan, his campaign took in $62,000, and $47,000 of that was spent on mostly advertising. And again, same as with Trish Beinen, his campaign was mostly self-funded through loans to the campaign, and there was a few local donors, so he actually did get quite a few local donors. Lynn Labraski's campaign raised approximately $9,000, spent less than $8,000, and half of those donations were in-kind donations. My business did loan $3,000 to my campaign, which I did as a gamble, because I don't expect to pay that back. So my campaign is grassroots, and up until now, I've been sacrificing, I've been working hard, budgeting every penny, trying to get out there on the radio, city council, volunteering, things I've done for many years, social media, door-knocking, phone calls, et cetera. I certainly don't have $88,000, $72,000, or $47,000 to spend on a primary election. So again, I ask everybody out there to please get out and vote next Tuesday, it's so important to vote local. I just want to remind everyone that in the last local election, which made me really want to run, was the voter turnout. So only 13,500 people out of 47,000 registered voters participated in the last municipal election, and that was actually the general election. So I think, you know, our city needs to get rid of wasteful spending, I think it lacks leadership and common sense decisions, and that's what's kept me motivated. Somebody told me once that prayers cannot win an election, but God is good, and he's mighty, and he's in control, so I disagree with that wholeheartedly. And again, May 20th is the primary, I want to make sure everybody gets out to the polls and makes their voice heard. So I appreciate your time, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mrs. Labraski.
Hello, I'm Rick Little, and I am an independent candidate for mayor of Scranton, Pennsylvania. I'd like to talk tonight how America's divided into 3,144 counties. All the corruption starts in each one of these counties. Drug trafficking, pedophilia, sex trafficking, corrupt judges, corrupt police, corrupt sheriffs, corrupt district attorneys, and corrupt attorney generals, regional attorney generals. Everything has become a matter of law, and I think that's evident in this county, where Judge Nealon suddenly is a county commissioner working in the election board, because all of this, everything hinges on who gets elected in the democracy, but democracy has gone way haywire in the last decade, and it's got to stop. And it is stopping. I mean, just look at Nashville's mayor, who tried some shenanigans, and, you know, I know this isn't a sanctuary city, but I know in Scranton Housing, a lot of people, they're filling up the building, emptying out the building, filling up the building, but they're filling them up with Democrat voters. I lived there for 14 and a half years. So Scranton Housing Authority spends about six figures every month on what they call delinquents. So they just pick a person and call him a delinquent, it's usually elderly, disabled person, or just a person they don't want living in their little private hotel, Scranton Housing Authority, which is federally funded, and it's a fiefdom unto its own, which is against the lease that they give you, it's supposed to be a HUD lease, you know, when something goes wrong, it's supposed to go under the 1951 Landlord Tenet Act, but they don't do that. They have their own judges in there, their own magistrates, each month they pay, they have a magistrate fee, I'll get to that, you know, and there's no privacy in there, they just, because, they just walk into your room, "They confiscated my stuff for two and a half years." And they can do this, and they can say to you, "Well, if you don't like it, why don't you move?", but it's really just stealing Social Security, and there's so much money involved in the whole thing. The treasurer's report of Scranton Housing Authority available, should be available to you, the minutes have always come to you, now it's on Electric City TV, was, you know, they have balances in their checking and money market accounts for $1,269,653.62, over $1 million investments. So I guess they, you know, all this money comes in, it's called Scranton Housing Authority. Scranton has lost housing, there's a housing problem, and this is exactly where it went, to the people that are running the board, the DAs and their connection with the police and the courts. I mean, I'm reading from the transcript of the I mean, I'm reading from the transcript of the April, April 7th, 225, Scranton Housing Authority meeting, there were, in March, there were 326 delinquents, and that, they spent $231,000, $231,182, and then in February, $252,000, and in January, $286,000. But this is never reflected in the public of what housing is available. They empty it, and yet, the thing for open apartments, for the elderly, the poor, it's not reported.
Thank you.
You have to look into that.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident, taxpayer. I've been riding around the city at different places, and it's pretty much the same all over. The pave cuts are not filled with the grooves, they do a third-rate job filling them up, and I don't expect them to pave every street every time they have to make a dig, but there and again, it's leaving room for water to get down in, and you get a little ice, it expands, it contracts, and the next thing you know, the street's pushed up. So we really need to clamp down on this and get that corrected, because it generally contributes to the road dilapidating over time. And they're ripping us off, the people that are digging these streets up, they have to, I mean, down in Allentown, there was a gas explosion that killed nine people a few years back, you know, so you have to fix the gas leak, you can't just leave it there. And by the way, you're paying more for gas, because anything they lose on the way, you get to pay for as a customer. And once again, we really need a council on tax exempts, not to suggest that they pay taxes, only to suggest that the state with their constitution starts to bring money in, send money in to take up, because these institutions service for everybody. If you need a hospital, you don't go to Moscow, you come here. If you live in Clark Summit, you come here. Or you go to one of the new hospitals in Dixon City, Lehigh or whatever, but I don't see where they're really big enough at this time. So we can't have 40%, we can't support 40%. And on Wall Street with the stocks and bonds, there is $5 trillion lost over the last couple weeks, and somebody was handed a good, a good stock market and economy. There was some inflation, yeah, but it's still there, and prices are going up everywhere constantly, and nothing has been done with, it's, I'm very concerned about police and fire and clerical unions losing money, and thus, we're responsible to pay the pension, irregardless, teachers, police, fire, clerical, whoever works for the government, we're responsible to finally pay the pension, even if the money is lost that was paid into it. And I was by the old swimming pool, and I don't know, the roof was torn off the entry building, and there was a sign, and I got my binoculars out, because $5 had mission, so anything we do with that, and if it requires raising my taxes, please don't do it. I think we have things good enough, and we have to live within our means, especially with the situation with the federal government. Now, here's a little food for consideration. Pam Beyondi, our Attorney General, was lobbyist for Qatar over there next to Saudi Arabia, on the Saudi Peninsula, at $115,000 per month. That translates into $1,380,000 a month. She was paying to be a lobbyist, now she's Attorney General of the United States. I would call that corrupt, I don't think that it could be any different. Maybe we should be a little more woke in this society. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. That's all for our sign-in sheet, anyone else wish to address Council?
Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and of all nights, I wanted to talk about the rules and regulations of council, but it's not on the sheet tonight, so you'll have to help me. I went online to see if I could find what it says about the words that you should be using from the podium. I think it says something like, you shouldn't use offensive, or profanity, or something like that. So as I'm sitting here, listening to some of the speakers, some of the words that are being used are very offensive to me. I call myself a believer, and I'm not patting myself on the back or anything, and I'm sure there's a lot more in here, but you have to be careful of your tongue. The tongue can say and do things that are very hurtful to people. The words I heard tonight, I don't use these words, so it's very difficult for me to say them. I heard damn, I heard hell, I heard scum, I heard useless, I heard worthless, and I would just like Council then to explain to me what that line, that bullet point on our rules and regulations of council, what does that mean to us? What's offensive to someone is offensive to me. And when I hear different words like that, think about your children, think about your grandchildren. Are we going to have to make our council meetings R-rated, so that our kids cannot listen to our government and what goes on? We don't want them running around saying these kinds of words. I know I don't want with my grandkids, and I'm always correcting them on the words and their choice of words. So as I sat there tonight, I just thought about that, I said, oh great, of all nights, it's not on the back of here, so I'm sure it was because of space. So, you know, I just thought I would just mention that, and I'm sure, I'm not alone, and I'm sure that there's public out there is just as offensive and offended by some of the words and the choice of words that are used. And like I said, it may not be offensive to others, but it is offensive to me. Now, the other thing that I'll start to talk about, it won't be next week, but the following week, if everyone can put on their calendars, for June 21st is going to be our Electric City Flower Show. I'll be getting the flyers made and trying to get my hands on them, and I'll be giving them out, so that we can get it publicized as much as we can. ECTV always does a great job and comes and helps us out with that. So I just wanted to say that as well. I won't be here next week, but the following week, hopefully, I'll have that information. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
Excuse me, Virgil Argenta. This is National Police Week, thank you to the men and women in law enforcement for protecting us from what we fear. On April 29th, 2025, Concerned Resident Richard Sabetta addressed city council to highlight a pressing issue regarding a hazardous property located at 423, 425, 10th Street and 425 Azwell Court. This concern has been going on for three years without any adequate resolution. On May 5th, 2025, driven by concern for safety of city residents, I personally visited the site, which poses a very significant risk, and subsequently shared the photographs on Facebook to raise public awareness about one of Scranton's numerous neglected hazardous properties. On the morning of May 8th, 2025, an emergency transmission through 9/11 dispatched emergency response teams along with police units to the site of a building collapse in the 400 block of Azwell Court. Scranton mayoral candidate Bob Sheridan, aware of this hazardous property while door-knocking in the neighborhood, heard sirens, went to the scene. Upon his arrival, he found a demolition company, RLE, on site, along with two city officials, Sherry and Andrew, from the City Blight Department. Their conflicting reports, neighbors claimed there was a collapse without any demolition crews present, while the city states it was a scheduled demolition. If the city's statements are accurate, why did the neighbor make a frantic 911 call? Moreover, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Scranton has trained and qualified demolition crew, and the Department of Public Works, who we call the DPW, possesses all the necessary equipment for property demolition. This makes the city's claim even more questionable. According to the April 29 minutes of the council meetings, page 25, and line 22, Schuster states, "This property may be on the demo list." However, the last update we got was, "There's no timeline for demolition of it." On page 26, line 3, Schuster further adds, "It may be on the demo list, but there's no timeline for the administration as to when it will be demolished." Will the council defend the Department of Public Works, DPW, and explain why city employees who are qualified and equipped to do this job, and have done other jobs like this, are being bypassed? Please provide the taxpayers with the cost paid to RLE, and who authorized this demolition. Given that emergency demolition exists, why aren't we cleaning up our neighborhoods by rotating through sections of Scranton and demolishing the worst buildings in each section of the city? Are we going to stand up for DPW and make sure that work is not being taken away from them by private contractors? Geisinger Parking Lot at Naog recently had all new lines painted for the parking area. DPW did not paint those lines. Was this bid out? What was the cost? Why are we taking work, again, away from our DPW union members? We should be protecting them. They're out there with no contract, again, still, while the lawyers are making money. Pave cuts, for instance, have anyone thought about reaching out to the former pave cut inspector that the city employed for 25 years? I did. He left in July 2020. Would you be surprised to know that? In that year alone, he brought $550,000 into the city? And you people don't advocate for a pave cut inspector, a moneymaker for the city? There's two stop signs missing at Electric and Dixon. Good luck in the election.
Thank you, Mr. Argenta.
Hi, Tracy Rikus, West Side Scranton. I don't usually come here, the last time I came, Pat Rogan was on council. So, yeah, so I wanted, I've been watching, and it's just gone crazy. So the potholes, there's some on Luzern and Mania, and Cap House and Olive, right underneath the trestle. I go on those streets every single day, and it's ruining my car. And most of, most of Cap House Street, especially right, right in front of the bakery. So I've been hearing a lot about the homeless people, so I, I did some research. There's a bunch of counties that are, like, actually doing something with the homeless people. They're either building or renovating apartment buildings for the homeless individuals. Now, Montgomery County is building a new 24/7 homeless shelter in Lansdale, and they are also working on an emergency hoteling program in Pottstown. Luzern County approved a plan to house the homeless families in apartments in Wilkes-Barre. And Allegheny is renovating existing buildings and moving individuals out of shelters into stable homes. Now the trash, why is it in other major cities that I've been to lately, the streets are cleaner than Scranton? People around here just don't care to even put their trash in garbage cans. This has been going on for years and years, so I don't, I just don't understand it. The recycling, people would recycle more if more things could be recycled. The crime, I believe the kids in the middle schools and the high schools should have mandatory gun safety classes. I know we did when I was in school. Granted, I went to a country school where we have hunting, but they need it up here And we never had a problem until they took, took that course out of the schools. Now, as most people talk about our lovely president, hand against my man is pretty sad. If you can, if you can do the job better, run for president. You have to be 35.
May 25th, Mr. Trust Council.
Sorry. Yeah, if you can't, if you think that you can do his job, run. You have to be 35 years old, so, and, oh, and for Act 9, it's for girls' sports. Us girls came a long way, we don't want boys in our sports. Granted, when I was in high school, there was boys on the field hockey team, but they were actual boys. So that's my little thing about that. And don't forget to vote on May 20th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Coyne, Menucha. First off, I just want to let you know that my area in Menucha, that was built in 1965, has never had any storm drains. We have about roughly- Roughly a four-block by six-block area that never has had storm drains in it, period. So we have runoff issues back there because we have nothing collecting. Going on, I assume we are still over just 88% of the recycle refusal rate, recycle refusal rate. So we've now paid out at a constant $1,597.75, not including multiple recycle runs, duplicate costs for the fuel and trucks and wear and tear. To date, the minimum we've wasted by not taking our recycling and just moving it over to the trash is $97,324.75. We're just on the cusp of $100,000 that we've thrown in the dump. And I still have not seen any mystery bid for, bid or searches from the mayor come down, as she said was coming, in line for a new recycling vendor. Can we get an update on that? Moving on, I could talk again about the mayor's State of the City address, and how the stormwater projects in the park, investments in the majority are not our doing, but happenstance from a national handout. But that's really not important tonight. On the subjects for tonight are the emergency operations centers that are to be used for Lackawanna County as a whole. It seems- It seems that the body is, of the entire resolution, is stacked with the same BS that was used for the Sirente Center. It's for all of Lackawanna County. Maybe we'll even make a profit off it. Other municipalities will use it and the resources, except our, except like the fire company. When we send our firemen to other regions and other areas, we don't get paid back for that. We have an agreement that isn't on paper. It's a verbal agreement not to charge other counties for our fire trucks going to help someone else. Because we're flowing money, and we just like offering city services to everyone else free of charge. If it's going to be a Lackawanna County community center, then maybe Lackawanna County, who increased the taxes 33%, should get their foot in the game and own it, not the city of Scranton, even if it's housed here, because housed here is still housed in Lackawanna Now, onto the Scranton Times and the opinion column by Chris Kelly. Maga crats. Well, Les Spindler is a closet maga craat? Because in Christmas at Bob Bowles's Christmas party, he was back there serving food for the poor. He was helping side by side Bob Bowles, and we know where Bob Bowles stands. Does that mean that Les is a maga craat just because he's seen with him? So, Sean McCandrew was spotted with Republicans at a charity event, and somehow he gets painted guilt by association, that even in a charity event, you have to be partisan and not go up and shake the hands and say, "Thanks for being here," without getting painted as a maga Republican. For someone who has stated, "I like Chair Mac because he was standing up for a reduction to the 33% increase when it came down the line." But just like Biden Street, some of the chosen party decided not to go there. I'll shake the hand of Bob Bowles or anyone. I don't accidentally leave a Republican, you don't accidentally leave a Republican candidate out of the paper and then toss a photo in the obits as it seems a Republican tilt. I do have an issue with Sean McCandrew, whose uncle, Mark McCandrew, and nepotism, and how that might impact two of the three votes on this body, making it hard to overturn. But on the contrary, the mayor and the chief of police have ruled as well that nepotism is fine as long as someone else votes them in. That became the rule under this administration, and I guess, since that's the rule now, anything's open. Good night.
Marie Schumacher, resident, taxpayers in the city of Scranton. I guess I, I don't know quite what to do. I was looking pictures of my, on my, which I'll show you later, cuts into 307. And the cuts on 307 were made by the bottoms of, of cars, or maybe trucks too, I don't know, but that came off Seymour Avenue. Now, where do you go to go to get something done? I mean, I myself had, I spent $2,200 this year because I also made that same call, got out and went down 307 and hit the bottom, and I paid out $2,200. Now, what can be done? And where do you go? Do you go to the, the city, or do you go to the state?
Marie, is it 307? Is it State Road? Were you on that, or were you on the city road coming down?
Half and half.
I'm sorry?
I said half and half. Half on Seymour and half on, on the
Where is the road cut? You said there was a cut
It's on, on 307.
It's on 307. So, that would be who you would call? If, I mean, if it's 307, that would be State Road, right?
Well, yes, but it wouldn't be there on 307 if it wasn't coming out from Seymour Avenue, which is a city street.
Okay.
So, I mean, what do you do?
Are you saying that the road is cut? There's a cut in the road?
I'll show you after the meeting. I've got it on my little camera here, but I'll show you. It's, so we don't know where you go. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smir, I'll reach out to PennDOT in the morning and ask them to look at it and determine if it's theirs or the city's.
Good evening, Scranton City Council. Mike Mancini, true resident of our city of Scranton. To quote an old hairband rat, "What comes around goes around." I'll tell you why. This evening, I will call a spade a spade. Last week, I questioned about her, there was a question raised about my residency by a sitting council member, Mr. Schuster. You know that I reside in Scranton based upon our time together as part of the West Scranton Crime Watch. Maybe you should ask the mayor about her residency. Yet, you won't do that. You walked around your neighborhood with her four years ago. There are more questions about her residency than mine. With that being said, I'm here tonight to talk about our recent interactions regarding the only crime watch program that you disbanded and used lies about me to put your own personal vendetta over on something special to help our community. Need not remind you that one of our Scranton police officers, our brave police officers, was critically injured, and another one passed away while on duty, both in West Scranton. You work with children daily. Commend you for that. What I will not commend you for is the fact that you targeted me personally via email shared by all members of the Scranton, West Scranton Crime Watch. And unlike Dr. Rothschild, who turned two syllables into a four-syllable word, you chose to take two things about me, one involving my vehicle, which was in the garage being worked on for 22 days with an engine repair that still isn't fixed. I have a date with the district magistrate to correct that wrongdoing. It's the same very vehicle that I visit my son daily, drive around for about 20 minutes before I visit him, then I don't want to leave. The other thing that you twisted was the time that I spent helping the Washmore Street Cemetery. Mr. Schuster, you were careless with the truth. The good people of Scranton would be careless if they voted for you. To single out a father who lost his only child and acted marine to an opioid crisis is deheartening, disheartening. Carry my truths. I pretty much put my life on hold after my son's passing, working on a home with a compression fracture in my L1 vertebrae as a tribute to him, and then thankfully beating stage-two classic Hodgkin's lymphoma. I'm still waiting my closure. June 18th, you will be sentenced. I will be in San Diego speaking to a judge requesting a life imprisonment sentence. Yet, locally, do not prosecute those who impact families in my very same hometown. That will change. How many families were impacted by that pill press found in Scranton? Gang members who were found with that pill press were pictured with the mayor and a child. I'm running to become the 37th mayor of Scranton because our city needs to be given back to its citizens. We need to flip this script. We continuously vote for the same type of people, keep getting the same type of results. This is time to put away the bandages and the first aid kit, start fixing things. I mean well, Mr. Schuster. I want to do my part to make our city safer, better roads, fiscal responsibility, take that extra set of doors off and open the city for business. This is the most important election in my lifetime. Getting out to vote is critical to our future success. In about 168 hours from now, the polls will close. Speak your mind. Get out and vote. Don't vote for those who take four deep end pools away, 155 million in grants and not visibly seen. Our police officers are 40-plus short, or those who disband the only crime watch program because of lies and politics. Next week, my qualifications. Change is coming. Good evening, council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Volenberg. Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
No, just a few quick comments. I appreciated having Eileen Cipriani, Scott Gassenmeyer, and the other two gentlemen here this evening to talk about the pave cuts and the process that's being used now. So, that was very informative. It seems like we're on the right track now, so I appreciate that. Other than that, I want to wish everyone who's running for public office on Tuesday, I wish you the best of luck. I give anyone credit that's willing to go out and get petitions and put your name on a ballot. So, that means that you want to, you want to serve your city. So, I wish each of you the best of luck on Tuesday. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
So, yes, I do have a few. Last week, I asked Mr. Volenberg if he could check up on an update on Ferdinand Street. Back in March, we talked with Eileen Cipriani, who said that that project was out to bid. Did we get an update on that?
We did request a few weeks ago that that section, the 1800 block of Ferdinand, be added as an alternate to the 2025 paving list.
Okay.
And I'll follow up.
And Kier's Court was another one that you had, you had sent
That's another one that we added that was not on the record.
All right. Thank you very much.
The 2,700 block of Kier's Court.
Thank you. Thank you. Last week, I did ask for an update on our HUP test, so I asked about the last update we got, where that letters didn't go out, but the answer that we got today was that the county tax assessor's office mailed the HUP test-related letters out on May 7th with a return date of June 30th. So, the county is going to process those responses once they are returned, but that return date is June 30th. I also see that there was a question about basins. Mr. Volenberg, we were, we were looking into getting the city-owned basins and the water company basins compiled. I know you reached out to Jim Mack and Steve Oszulinski from the, from the water company, and I see that there, we also had a DPW request. Have we got any updates on that list of basins?
They are still compiling the list.
All right. Thank you. Have we heard from the water company on that?
No, I haven't. I'll follow up.
All right. Thank you. A couple other addresses that I had, the one on Yazoo Drive, I was glad that the resident came out tonight. We forwarded that email over, and if we could try to get that meeting with, with that resident and city engineers and those involved in
We asked that question today, and I'll involve the city engineer tomorrow.
Thank you. I also, in the last few days, sent over 421 Campbell Street. The resident did inform me that somebody was out at about 9:00 in the morning, but the, the residents weren't home or didn't answer the door, so I'll be sending another email about that address tonight so we could follow up on that and stay on top of it because it seems like a dangerous situation.
It is.
The last one, we did get a, a response back from code enforcement regarding Main Avenue. I believe it was the 100 block of Main Avenue. It was a appliance store. So, the complaint that we got from the resident was that appliances were out on the city streets, and they went out and they stated that the appliance store was zoned correctly, but the complaint from the resident was that the appliances were out on the street. So, can we just follow up on that, on that complaint to see where we could go when it comes to those appliances being on the street? I understand that it is an appliance store, but to have those, those items out on the road doesn't seem correct.
I will, sir.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. First, I just wanted to check with Mr. Volenberg about one of the responses we received in reference to something I brought up last week about the city-owned basins and sewage drains. There is one intersection in particular I was asking about last week downtown, and that was for Penn Avenue and Biden Street. Was that one sent along to DPW to take a look at that corner?
That was submitted, but we have not had an answer as to their next steps.
Okay. All right. I appreciate the clarity. And then, I also had received a status on the paving and marking that we are looking for Lackawanna Avenue, and I was told that the city and its engineers have reached out to the utility companies for an update on scheduled resurfacing. The locations have been marked, and the utilities anticipate work beginning in two to three weeks, whether depending, the streetscape work is still pending, PennDOT permitting. So, I guess we'll, we'll keep an eye on that and see what happens within the next couple of weeks, and we'll stay on top of it to ensure that it gets completed soon, hopefully. there was someone who had asked about the homeless population within Scranton, and I did want to ask the administration if I could get a date for the next Unsheltered Task Force meeting, because I haven't seen anything as of late. I think it's been a few months since they've met. I know that's headed by the mayor, so I wanted to see if there was a
I'll get the date.
And pending. Okay. Thank you. let's see. I had a few other concerns that I'll just have forwarded along to Mr. Volenberg so they could be taken care of. There were just a couple other things I just want to make a few comments on. First, SB 9 was brought up, Senate Bill 9, from, from last week that I wanted to make a comment on, and there are a couple of other comments too in reference to transgender people involved in sports. So, I just wanted to say that I was, I was really disheartened and disappointed with how our senator voted on the bill last week. I think that bills like this are really only meant to hurt the transgender community, but I think it could also in turn hurt women and girls in sports who could be subject to questioning about their gender or even invasive exams. And no one is transitioning to another gender just so they could be on a sports team. That's, that's not happening. And I think what this really is about is erasure, erasure of trans people from our society, not wanting them to be a part of our society because they don't fit in to what, you know, we think that, that they should be. And I think that's, that's really sad because I think they could be incredible people and incredible parts of our society, and I, I think that this is just trying to create fear and banning them from anywhere that we can, sports, bathrooms. So, I think it's, it's really terrible that this is a priority of our senate instead of the issues that really matter to Pennsylvanians and Scrantonians and real things that are affecting people's lives that, that could be addressed as opposed to caving into these, these false identities. So, another thing that I just wanted to make note of, Ms. Jeffries had brought up the language in council, which I know I've addressed many times myself. I think it's really offensive to call immigrants scumbags. I think they are productive members of our society, and you don't know someone's legal status. You might think that you do from where the person is from, or the language they speak, or the color of their skin, but you, you don't know what their legal status is, and people are being taken across our country without due process, and there's evidence of this. I'm not just spreading rumors. Like, that's, that's what's happening, and I really hope that that does not happen in our city, and I would be against any ICE office from opening in our city. So, I just wanted to make that stance known, and I want to protect our, our immigrants. That's all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrew, do you have any motions or comments?
So, I have a couple responses that I received. So, last week, I asked about an update on the study at Engine 10 on East Mountain. What I got back was the city submitted an LSAT grant application, and so this is to fund the study, and there is still, which is still pending, so that's the answer to that. And then, for a couple of weeks, I've been talking about this group, you know, and I said, "I'm thrilled to have them. We should embrace" We should embrace them. We should support them, you know, and its nickname is Scranton Lovers Beautification Group. And they've been asking for permission to plant flowers, because this is the time to do it. You know, they have people committed to donating them, and so this is the third response they got. So they didn't answer the question if they're allowed to plant them at all, and that's what they want to hear, because they're going to clean up more than one space. But this one was specific, that they wanted to do it property off Front Street after they clean it up. You know, of course, the police see the attached emails sent and received through 311 and forward to OECD. For some reason, OECD had to make the final call, but they got, you know, they went through a couple of departments with no response or feedback. So OECD says for their final review. So the city, okay, the response we finally got was the city does not have site control over any parcels on Front Street. Two small parcels list the city as owners, but not, but are treasury deeds, which does not give the city site control. So I asked our solicitor, and Solicitor Gilbry, could you just explain, because I'm going to be asked the question, what does a treasury deed mean, and why can't we, you know, plant some flowers there? So if you can explain that. I hate to put you on the spot, but I'm going to get this question after the meeting.
Well, I'll give you the best answer I can give you, because I did not speak with the administration in regard to this. This question did not come up until earlier today when you asked me. But basically, with a treasury deed, this is when a property is taken by a governmental entity due to tax issues not being paid. If they don't then follow through with the actual process to assume control of that property, they have legal control, but they don't have the ability, they don't actually own the property. It's not a property the city can then do something with. I assume that's what they're saying, and they say treasury deed.
Right, right. I appreciate your opinion. I still think there should be a lot of plant flowers there, but no one's using it. And if the city actually owns it in some perspective, I think it should be allowed. But with that said, so I'm assuming, and I'm going to let the group know that, okay, but any other property, they're allowed to do it. Not someone's personal property, but any other city-owned property, as long as it's not treasury deeds, they should do that, because this is the time to do it. They're anxiously waiting to do this, and they keep hitting some speed bumps. But like I said last week, time's their enemy, so they got to get flowers, they got to get this done. So thank you, Solicitor Gilbry, and thank you to the Scranton Lovers Beautification Group that are out there, you know, cleaning up and trying to make the city look better. All right. So also, Mr. Coyne talked about a bid update for the recycling contract. This is a couple of months now. And I initially proposed, okay, so we're paying almost 100 grand now because they're taking our co-mingled recyclables and throwing them in the garbage. That's basically what's happening. I proposed a solution months ago. Just do a separate pickup for glass and plastic. Not a big deal. Take them up separately, then they don't have to throw it away. Then it can be properly recycled. I remember suggesting that, and all I got was, well, we'll think about it, or we're negotiating. So, or then we finally get another response that we're now looking for a recycling contractor. So that's been months. It's been months. So can we get a final update to see where they're at? I mean, it's approaching 100 grand that we shouldn't be paying. That's absurd.
I will, sir.
All right. And then also, the building directly next to the fire station, I don't know the name of the building, but it's huge, and it has a huge gutter that runs the whole length of it, and the gutter is huge. It's not like a house gutter. It's about this big. I don't know what material it's made from, but it's tilted and hanging and poses a great public safety risk. If you can have, send that over and have it looked at.
I'll send it over.
Before someone gets hurt, we don't want that to happen. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. I just have a few things tonight. The memorandum of agreement between the City of Scranton and the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number 60, repealing the residency requirements for the city employees. It was signed yesterday by both Alan Lucas and by the mayor, so I believe that is finally finished. Also, while I was on the Recreation Authority at Naog, Geisinger took care of it. The deal was if they parked there, they donated money, but they did maintain that parking lot. They plowed it, they cleaned it, and they also do the line painting. So I would assume it's them again, because they seem to do it every two years, and I've seen it done probably four times already. So I believe that's what it is. Now, the building on South 10th Avenue, the building did go down before the contractor got there. So the contractor basically cleaned it up, but it did fall down before we got there. Also, there was another onsite emergency demolition bid today at 801 South Webster Avenue. That was, I believe it was about 1:00 this afternoon. So I don't know what condition that building's in, but they were there today to start that. Also, I forgot in announcements, May 17th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., South Scranton Neighborhood Association is having their neighborhood cleanup. They're meeting at the Augustus Funeral Home at 202 Piston Avenue. And I've got this request or this information, for information, from the county. They were told that St. Patrick's Day Parade, there was an automobile accident. A car went around the garbage truck down Biden Street and up the one-way, and I believe they said it struck somebody or something. But I did ask our chief, and they had sent me a message a little while ago, that there was an arrest made there. So I guess it did happen. So they were wondering if it was ever reported. So yes, it was reported, and there was an arrest there made. And also, I guess tonight, again, we're all asking, and I hope this is the last time, but emails, texts, and all the phone calls, does the mayor live in the city? Now, while you would continue on with this. So I did look up her house and see where she lives. She lives on Euclid Avenue, but also on Euclid Avenue, when I was up there, there are two parcels across the street, empty lots with trees on them. But there's also trail cams on them. So one would assume if there's trail cams on them, that why would we even ask if the mayor lives in Scranton anymore? Let's find out whose trail cams they are, and maybe you can find out the truth once and for all. Maybe that's why there's no evidence brought forward that she doesn't live in the city. That's all I have.
Five B for introduction of resolution, reappointment of Jessica Nolan as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council expiring May 31, 2028.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five C for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of a fiscal year 2026 federal appropriations community project funding request application by the City of Scranton for up to $3 million for the Piston Avenue infrastructure streetscape project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying, introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five D for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of a fiscal year 2026 federal appropriations community project funding request application by the City of Scranton for up to $363,618 for the Pine Brook Brownfield Cleanup and Site Preparation Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five E for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of a fiscal year 2026 federal appropriations community project funding request application by the City of Scranton for up to $1 million for the purchase of police technology and equipment.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five F for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of a fiscal year 2026 federal appropriations community project funding request application by the City of Scranton for up to $2,343,750 for the construction of an emergency operations and training center, EOC.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, this is the Career Tech Center project. Okay.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five G for introduction of resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Barry Isit and Associates for the design and engineering of the Grace Street Playground.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five H for introduction of resolution, approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license R.3518, currently owned by Deborah Lynn Reese and located at 138 Smith Street, Dunmore, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania 18512, to David G. LLC, located at 667 South River Street Plains, Luzerne County, Pennsylvania 18705, as required by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table item five H.
There's a motion on the floor in a second.
Oh, no, there isn't a second.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item five H. This piece of legislation is being tabled to allow for advertisement of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, May 27, 2025, at 5:45 p.m. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five I for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for up to $175,000 in funds for Phase Two of the all-inclusive playground at Naog Park. That includes the design, purchase, and installation of all-inclusive playground equipment.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five J for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for up to $118,289 in funds for Fellows Park Improvements.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five K for introduction of resolution, accepting the recommendation of the Historic Architectural Review Board and denying the certificate appropriateness for the conversion of two existing static billboards located at 320 Mulberry Street.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm going to refer to our solicitor. Attorney Gilbry, the reason that the HARP has denied this is due to the fact that this billboard is in the historical section of the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the electronic billboard, as you enter the city off of, I guess would be Music Street and Biden Expressway, that sits above the jewelry store there, that's not in the architectural or the historical section of the city?
That's correct. Nor is the one that comes, as you come from north Scranton into the city onto Mulberry Street. That is outside of the historic district as well.
So the issue would be if we were to grant this, that would just open the door to...
It would take away your right to further limit any of these LEDs in the historic section.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Five L for introduction of resolution, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the City of Scranton and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant in the amount of $1,000 awarded by Lackawanna County for an electronics recycling event.
At this time, entertain a motion that item five L be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, seven A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed at Council Number 75, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the City of Scranton and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for use of American Digital Cartography, Inc. products.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven B for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, filed at Council Number 76, 2025, ratifying and authorizing the execution of temporary construction easement agreements for parcels located at 2709 Jackson Street and 8 Funwood Drive, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the sinkhole repair project.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item seven B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven B legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven C for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 202, 2025, resolution for plan revision for new single-family home land development located at 111 Monterey Road.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item seven C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item seven C legally and lawfully adopted.
Seven D for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution 203, 2025, appointment of Samantha Bode, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Environmental Advisory Council to fill the unexpired term of Robert Shoemaker, who resigned. Samantha Bode's term is effective upon execution of this resolution and will expire on July 31, 2026.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item seven D.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I want to thank Mr. Shoemaker for all the work and dedication he gave to that committee, and I know, I believe he moved out of the city, is that...
Yeah.
So, but, I mean, oftentimes, you go up to Naog Park, you'd find this guy putting mulch out and just working and always contributing to the betterment of the city. So I want to thank Mr. Shoemaker and wish him well.
I agree. I also wanted to thank Mr. Shoemaker for his commitment to the city and for participating on the Environmental Advisory Council, as well as all the work that he's done at Naog. We appreciate that. And then I also want to welcome Samantha Bode to the council.